Deb Knopf.
Here.
Cindy Garrity. Cindy Garrity.
Where'd she go?
We'll come back to her.
Here. Oh, there she is.
All right. Rocky Tripovich. Glenn Carlson.
Here.
Larry Derrigan.
Here.
Craig Hupman.
Here.
Magdalene Dale.
Here.
Esme Martenson.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, if everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can you confirm our meeting posting, Linda?
Yes, I can confirm that today's meeting has been posted at all the designated locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda this evening is our school board reorganization. And first, we have our oath of office by our two new elected members. Esme Martenson and Magdalene Dale. You both completed your oath of office.
On Friday.
Twenty-fourth. So with that, do we, so then they're in the voting, they're in a voting capacity now for this meeting?
Yes, they are.
And Craig, is Craig in the voting capacity then?
Craig is, go ahead.
I don't believe so.
We don't, we don't believe so. Craig is shaking his head, no.
No.
Okay. So with that, we thank Craig for his thousand years of service to the school board. And Rocky, thank you both so much. You've left really, really, really big shoes to fill. Thank you, Craig. Yeah, thank you, Craig. Is Rocky here?
I don't think so.
I'm gonna turn my screen around for, for Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you all very much. It was a pleasure and a true honor to work with you all. I'm gonna miss a lot of it. Some of it I won't, but I won't miss politics, I'll be honest. You guys keep the faith, you're doing a great job. I don't have any worries for this district. You guys are gonna continue on and do a great job for this district. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Craig. We still have your number. You can still hang around. We'll move forward to the election of office. We have first the president seat. I nominate Nicole, Nicole.
Second it.
I accept your nomination by Debbie and second by Cindy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.
I think you should ask if there's any other nominations first.
Oh, yeah, three call, okay. Are there any other nominations for board president? Are there any other nominations for board president? Can we use the last motion, though? We can carry the last motion?
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to vice president. I would like to nominate Debbie Knopf. I'll second. I accept your nomination. Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Do we have any other nominations for vice president? We have a motion by Cindy, a second by myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have our treasurer position. I nominate Glenn Carlson.
I second that.
Oh, accept the nomination, thank you.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? We have a motion by Debbie, a second by Cindy, or Glenn as treasurer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We have the clerk position.
I move, we nominate Cindy. To be clerk.
I second that. Did everybody get that? Can you repeat, Glenn?
I move that Cindy be, be like, uh...
I second that. What happened to your mic? I accept. Thank you, Cindy.
Any other nominations for clerk?
I accept.
Any other nominations for clerk? We have a motion by Glenn, a second by Debbie to nominate Cindy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, moving forward after the election of officers, we have appointment and selection of our CISA twelve representative currently Larry Derrigan. Larry, are you still willing to accept that capacity?
No.
Larry.
I nominate Mag- Magdalene. I second that.
I'd be fine with that.
Are there any, we don't have to call three times for this, right? This is just straight up.
Well, it's just, I would appoint someone, yeah. It just might be someone else that wanna be nominated, so.
Is there anyone else interested in the CISA twelve representative position?
No.
Guys, we have a motion by Cindy. A second by, who's the second by, Deb?
Yep.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, our Wisconsin Association of School Board delegate is currently myself. Are you willing to continue doing that? Yeah, yeah, I like it a lot, actually.
I nominate Nicole.
I'll second that.
Are there any other individuals? Uh, we have a motion by Cindy, a second by Glenn.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, CISA twelve convention representative. Can we nominate Magdalene to do that as well, since she'll be CISA twelve rep? Is that okay with you, Magdalene?
Yeah, that'd be fine. What, what time of year is that usually?
Larry?
January.
It's a monthly meeting, but they have the convention once a year.
In January.
Okay, just trying to decide if it's gonna be virtual or not. I don't know about January.
Second.
Was the motion by Debbie?
Yes.
Second by Cindy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries Magdalene, CISA twelve convention rep. Um, committees.
Is that also a rip for the CISA twelve monthly meeting?
He's accepted that one.
Yes.
Okay.
Larry. What's that? Excitement. Um, let's start with the policy committee. Cindy, myself, and Larry are the current members. I'm willing to give up my seat to Esme or Magdalene if they're interested. Policy meets once a month, um, back-to-back with the finance committee.
I'll stay on, if that's all right.
We do.
Who wants my? Okay, so do we need a nomination, or just we, we just agree, or I don't remember if we voted last year? I think we just agree.
Yeah, you agree on this one.
And we wrap it all up.
Okay, so do you have Cindy, Esme, and Larry for policy, Linda?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Finance, uh, it's currently myself, uh, Rocky, and Glenn. I would like to stay on finance if possible.
I'd like to stay on it.
And I'd like to stay on it.
Oh, so you'd like to replace Rocky, Larry?
Yes.
On finance?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
You have that, Linda?
Yes, I do.
Uh, wellness committee is myself, Cindy, and Glenn. I'm willing to give up my seat for the wellness committee if someone is interested.
I'm interested in wellness. And I'm also willing to give it up if someone's interested.
And I am too, so. I mean, it's a great committee. The, uh, the time of the meetings is, has been really inconvenient for me, given when the, the board meets. It, it seems like they typically are meeting like the day after the board meeting, uh, in the afternoon, and it just was, you know, having to stay overnight and whatnot, it just wasn't, uh, working out.
And I don't think we really need three of us on the wellness, maybe even one or two of us, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Magdalene, you are the star. And Missy runs those meetings, Magdalene, they're great, so Missy will be in touch about all of that. Um, is the rest of the board okay with that? One representative?
Yep.
Sure.
And those meetings are open to any board members to attend. It's, if you are going to attend, you let the administration know in the event we have more than three members, and there could be a quorum. Um, buildings and grounds was Craig, Rocky, and Glenn.
I'd like to stay on that committee.
How often are they meeting, Glenn?
It's really ad hoc. Uh, um, there aren't monthly meet, there aren't regular monthly meetings. It's kind of as needed.
I'd like to join that committee. I was thinking about that also.
About.
Alright, guys are it.
Yeah, I'd like to get on it, too.
Did you hear, Larry? You would like to get on it if there's room?
Um, I think with, that's four people.
That would be a quorum, we couldn't have that.
Can't have that, right? So I've got Nicole.
She's a realtor. I would be interested, but it, uh, you know, it sounds like there's too many, so.
I'm, I'm willing to give mine up. Finance, yeah, everything comes to finance, so I'm willing to give that up. It's fine with me. So, we should add Larry and Glenn.
And I, I would too, you know, but I have, it would give some, and...
So we're looking at Esme, Larry, Larry, and Deb.
Yep. Okay.
Esme, Larry, and Deb.
Got it.
Got it.
Well, yeah, I guess I had, um, the Dobbs on it, that's good with me.
And teacher negotiation committee is currently Cindy, Deb, and Rocky.
I'd be willing to give it up if somebody wants it.
Can you explain more about what they handle at the meeting?
The teacher negotiation is technically only once a year, so that committee meets when, um...
Negotiating.
It would be next, next May, next month in May, before the teacher salaries are negotiated for the year, teacher contracts. So they sit on one side of the table, we sit on the other side of the table. Like we say, this is what we're able to do, and the teachers say, this is what we want, and then we negotiate it out. Yeah, we negotiate a little bit, so. And it, it's fine, it's a good, it's, it's always, I've, it's always been a, uh, a good committee to be on and good connections with teachers. So I'd like to stay on it. Yeah, I'll pick it up if, uh, Cindy wants to come off. And then we need someone to fill Rocky's position. Esme and Magdalene, anyone interested?
I could try, I could be willing, but, yeah.
Everybody okay?
So that's Deb, Nicole, and Magdalene?
Yeah.
Mm-huh.
Okay.
And then, support staff negotiation committee, currently Glenn, myself, and Deb. And again, the same, um, idea, once a year, we meet with the support staff, which are non-teaching and non-administrative staff, to negotiate annual salaries.
I'm happy to give Magdalene or Esme or interested, or anyone else.
Me too.
Not a lot of takers.
I, I'd be willing to.
Who was that?
Yeah. Esme, yeah.
So I guess.
Yes.
Yes, are you a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Larry? Are you a yes?
For the support staff committee?
Yeah, support staff. Glenn, you or I, or Cindy?
Um...
I'll go on.
I'll stay on it. Okay, Cindy, okay, good.
Alright. So who is, who is that committee now? Esme, Deb, and Cindy.
Okay.
Our J O M Johnson O'Malley Committee School Liaison is currently Jeff. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I accept.
Can you restate, Linda, who you have?
For all of them?
Um, well, I just missed one on policy. I don't know if everyone else got them all.
Policy.
Yeah, if you could.
Policy is Cindy, Larry, Esme. Finance is Larry, Glenn, and Nicole. Wellness is Magdalene Dale. Buildings and grounds, Larry, Esme, Deb. Teacher negotiation, Deb, Nicole, Magdalene. And support staff, Esme, Deb, and Cindy. J O M is Jeff Gordon.
Do you wanna motion to, um, accept all of those appointments, or?
We can.
I don't know what we've done in the past.
I don't know that we've taken action on the committees in the past.
Nope, we haven't.
There are points.
Yep.
Okay, so let's move on to point ten on the agenda. Establish regular meeting times and dates. Currently, we have the, currently we're the second Monday of the month, but you're proposing the third Monday now? Why are we changing that?
Yeah, Randy, um, and I got together, and she is hoping proposing the third Monday. Randy, you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Um, the third Monday would be, I'm gonna mute yours.
You're gonna have to mute your microphone, Jeff, there you go.
Got it? Little mute button. You don't have to have your screen off. No, no, you're, you're a microphone right here. Left, right here. It's on your keyboard. This one right there. Okay, that's good. Yep. Okay, um, I thought the third Monday would just be easier for, a lot of times, the second Monday comes really close to end of the month. Balances and all the things that I have to get ready for, voucher reports, things like that, balancing the bank statement sometimes can get a little hectic at that second Monday. And then if we have a later board meeting too, it seems like it's so close to the next board meeting.
Yeah, the other thing, Randy, is that sometime, I mean, you have to get ready for the finance committee, which is the prior Thursday. And so sometimes that will be the first Thursday of a month, um, which makes it really hard for you then to, um, you know, get the reports ready and, and everything. So I, I would support moving the, the meeting. And then that gives you, you know, obviously, that extra week for the finance committee meeting.
Right, that would really make a big difference.
I don't have any objection to changing to the third Monday. It'd be a change, it'd be different, but, I mean, I don't, does anyone have any clear objections to changing the, to the third Monday?
I don't.
We would maintain our six PM start time.
Yes.
Um, so moving to the finance committee meets the Thursday prior to the school board regular meeting. At, we've been meeting at four forty. I'm open to the time change if it, um, is that important for our other board members. Glenn, I know it's tough with your schedule, and it really, it's important that you're able to make the meetings too.
And you know, it also is possible, now that we're learning how to use Zoom, that, you know, that might be something that's possible and, and would, um, would work well. And I think I've been taken off a video. It says, "The host has stopped my video."
Yeah, and your microphone's working a lot clearer.
Okay.
I don't know if it's just the connection or what.
Alright, alright, whatever, okay.
Yeah, that was me. That was a bandwidth limitation, so I think it'll be, I think your audio will be better.
That's fine, thanks.
Larry, does that four forty time work okay for you?
Yeah, it's good. I don't like the idea of going on a viral all the time, though. I would rather sit here at a meeting and look at people.
And we can do that, um, yeah, regularly, normally. Um, policy committee typically meets, um, five thirty back-to-back with the finance committee. I can't guarantee that the policy committee starts at five thirty, 'cause, uh, sometimes we go over in finance, but...
You just said that the policy committee will follow the finance committee. Don't put a time.
Well, I think I'd like to have a time, because I don't have to be at the, um, finance one, so a set time would work better for me.
I mean, five thirty's fine. It, it does work.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you guys are running longer when I get there, I'm okay with waiting. It's just that I need a, a set time to, or, you know. That would help.
Five thirty, good. Cindy, Larry, and Esme. Um, wellness committee meets at three forty-five on the third Tuesday of September, October, January, February, April, and May. I'm not on wellness anymore, but it's up to you, Magdalene.
Is there any advantage to having it the day after our school board meeting, or the week before our school board meeting? I guess the only thing I would say was switching it to the second week, if there's an advantage to meeting before or after, but I don't know.
I agree, Mag. This is Missy Geisregan. I, I think that's a good idea, meeting before, because then we can share out, um, at the board meeting, and we certainly do not have to meet that often. That, that's just something, and we'll meet, um, now that you're on board, we'll meet sometime, hopefully here next month, and we'll do a new action plan in our new dates.
That sounds great, so let's switch it to the second Tuesday. And then it'll be so easy to schedule too, because it's just the two of us.
No, it's a lot of people.
There's a lot.
Oh, there's like teachers and stuff on it.
There's like, we need partners and everybody.
Okay, that makes sense.
Missy, do you wanna list out specific months, because these are specifically listed in the, what they must be in Niola now? 'Cause you said not that frequently. Do you just want to identify them, and then if you don't hold a meeting, you just notify?
Are you asking me that question?
Oh, Missy. I thought she was just talking without her microphone on the phone. Yeah.
Multitasking, being a mom. Um, do, say that again, Nicole, sorry.
Do you wanna list out all of those months for the, the wellness committee, or what do you prefer?
Can we list it out later, after we have our first meeting here in May with Magdalene on there? Or do we need to have those?
Mm-hmm.
Magdalene, do you wanna meet quarterly? We can meet quarterly. Do you think that's enough? I mean, that's what other school districts are doing. We, we kind of went a little above and beyond what most schools do, but typically, that's what they do is quarterly.
Yeah, Missy, I know when we first started, you mentioned that we were gonna meet often, because we were just starting, and then after that, you were gonna start meeting quarterly.
Yeah. So we can back it up, but Meg, that's up to you. If you feel like, 'cause you're new to it, that you wanna meet a little more than that, I'm good with it, just, it's up to you too.
I feel like I just need to be on it and get a feel for it. So if you're suggesting quarterly, I'm down for that, and if you give me a second, I can make, or do you wanna suggest which months that would be then? And if we feel like we need to meet more next year, we'll just change it, I don't know.
And you can meet more. You can meet more than, um, what's listed, if, if there's a meeting required.
Okay, that sounds great.
So we'll just leave it as is, or you wanna take some off? Let's take some off. What were the months again, Nicole? Sorry, I was... September, October, January, February, April, and May. Okay. April. Um, probably we should meet in September for sure. Um...
What about September, November, February, April?
That sounds good. We need an April one, towards the end of the year, to do our action plan, so, yep, that works for me.
Did you get that, Linda?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Uh, moving on, if everybody is okay with those meetings... Moving on, if everybody is okay with those meeting days and times, moving the regular board meeting to the third Monday of the month at 6:00 PM with the exception of our or in the school library with the exception of September for the La Pointe School, November at Legendary Waters and Casino. And the April meeting, I think it still falls on the third Monday in the Neola policy.
I'll check that.
I think that's statutory, Nicole. And I think it's the fourth Monday, but whatever.
I read it was the fourth.
Yeah, the exception. Everybody good?
Yep.
Moving on.
We don't need a motion?
I don't. We may.
Yes, because we're changing the date, so I would make a motion. I'll make a motion to what was said for changing that to the third Monday of the month and having it set as as discussed.
Second.
You have a motion by Cindy, a second by Debbie for the meeting times and dates that were discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. 3.1, we need an approval of our agenda for the evening.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Debbie, second by Cindy. All those in favor?
Aye.
3.2, public comments. Linda, did you receive anything or Jeff?
We have one, Mr. Craig Hoppen.
All right.
Remind the board in the district, let everyone know if you're aware that Mr. Mackey passed away this weekend at his home. I'm wondering if the board had had or could possibly send something to the family. He is the owner of the restaurant for many, 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 many years and a good friend and a good man.
Absolutely.
Sorry to hear that, Craig. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So Jeff, you'll make a note of that and make sure that something gets sent out?
Yes, I have it noted here and Linda and I will do that.
Okay.
The approval of meeting minutes, March 9th and March 16th.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Larry, a second by myself to approve the March 9th and March 16th meeting minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 4.1, effective communication. Jeff Gordon.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. This, today we're going to be talking about the virtual learning platform and for community members that may be listening. I will go over the new rules, so to speak, of virtual meetings. And then there has been concern about security on these meetings. Chris is going to talk a little bit about that, but part of our strategic planning, every month we have one of the five pillars, an administrator will talk about one of those pillars. And tonight I'll talk about communication. So as we are tonight, our new virtual learning plat, our meeting platform, there's there's some criteria for that. The criteria criteria is that 10 people or less can be allowed in the library where I'm at where we're at tonight. So tonight we have five people here. Craig left the meetings and now we're down to four. So if there was six more people that wanted to come in, we could permit them to come in, but that would be it. Anyone beyond that, we would have them either standing in the hallway or Chris and I and the school were working on another way to provide community members who don't have access to internet and community members that may not have access to a phone for them to reach out and we could deliver this meeting to them in a different way. Examples could mean we could have another room in the school building with a monitor and speaker in the room for them. Or we could have a speaker in the parking lot in the summertime. If if a car wanted to drive up, they could listen to the meeting in the parking lot. So those those are two areas right now that for sure we're working on. The platform that we use is important too for the simple reason that security is of utmost importance, but particularly when we get into executive session. Chris will monitor executive on the outside. He won't be in meeting, but he'll be able to monitor that on the outside to make sure that everything is followed correctly. In terms of the postings to the public, when we post a virtual school board meeting, we will post the traditional means in terms of language on the posting. But we are going to be adding for the community two two things for sure. Number one, an explanation to 10 or less people in the meeting. That would be mandatory. And the second one will be we'll add a link to this meeting for the posting. So those are the two differences, particularly for tonight and for last Thursday's finance meeting and policy that we put on the agenda. So that's some criteria that's different. And also locally, the school board has sole discretion on how you want to run these meetings in terms of virtual meetings. It's really your call and how you want to do this in terms of participation here or or at off sites. So those, that's pretty much in a nutshell, the difference between what we've gone from before to now. But it's important for the security aspects of this meeting. Chris, do you want to talk a little bit about security in terms of what we're doing tonight and also your function on the outside as these meetings go on and what you would be delivering on the outside looking in?
Yeah, so I'm going to attend all the meetings except for, I do have one correction, the closed session, I will not be part of the closed session. I've actually went through some training with Debbie and she will be, she will be managing that session. And she will essentially just make sure that everybody is checked in and then she will lock the session so that nobody else can join in. As far as the public sessions go, I create them all and I monitor all the guests who come. I allow them in when they when they show up on my list. And I basically just keep an eye on microphones and things like that and try to make sure that things are running smoothly. If we had an issue with, you may have heard of Zoom bombing is the the term that's out in the press right now. If we had an unwanted visitor who was intent on disrupting the meeting, I would remove that person. So that's that's the basics of it. All of our meetings are password protected so that you can't just get people jumping in drive by. They have to actually look and find the information, join the meeting. And if it became a problem, we could make people register as well, but I don't, I don't think that that's going to be a problem. A lot of people are doing meetings like these nowadays. And I think that covers most of it. Do anybody have any questions?
I have one. So if somebody wanted to come into our, be part of our meeting, do they have to contact you early on or to set it up or?
Nope, it's it's on our website in the announcement sections. It's on the district calendar, which is also on the website. The same invitation that you guys all received was available, made available to the public. It's also on board docs if anybody goes into the public area of board docs. So anyone can join and anyone is welcome. And the only reason we would remove anybody or block anybody out is if they were disruptive for the for the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
No problem. Thank you.
5.1, does anyone have any future agenda items? 5.2, finance committee. We did meet last Thursday. We covered vouchers, the budget that's being presented this evening and the winter transportation update. I think that was it. Was that it, Randy?
No, we also had something about the the meals that we'll be talking about in executive session.
Yep. 5.3, policy committee.
We did meet.
We did meet.
Yeah.
Cindy.
I try, I was there. I was there.
We covered the calendar for for our next school year that we also have on the agenda this evening. Moving on to administrative reports. Everybody get a chance to review the reports? Are there any questions for any of the administrators?
I think one of my questions was back to, I think this would be to Jeff. And that would be how is, are the extra meal, how's the meal program going in terms of service? And then you had said that we are getting reimbursed for some of the meals that we're serving or all of the meals or how is that working?
Yes, I did meet with Karen Mottan today, so she did provide me another, some more information that I can share later or at this time. But so far, so good. The meals are reimbursed for the breakfast meals that we serve and also the dinner meals that we serve. Ruckler provides the lunch at this time. The meals on the island are served from Farmhouse. They're our lunch provider that we've and so right now, the breakfasts and dinners are being served seven days a week, including the, is lunch or not lunch? Yeah, same with the lunch and they and they work. We contract them out for the island. I will say this, it's a lot of food. It, there's a lot going on with it. Karen does the Monday morning breakfast preparation with her staff. They serve, they they bring out at least 300 to 325 meals per per week that go out to to the families, actually 300 bags that go out and each bag has seven days of meals in it. And on Tuesdays, they do the dinner meals and the same for that. So that seems to be, the production of it seems to be going okay. We did have some issues with the menu that Karen is working with Gilpin on the island. I talked to her today and she, he did send the menus over that I provided the board members. I provided that to you down in the area of executive session, I believe. So you'll see them later. And Karen, Karen feels that the meals are comparable to what we're doing over here. So yeah, it seems to be going okay.
And then the funding for that is all through DPI?
The reimbursements, not all, not from the island, correct? The island is solely on the school district of Bayfield. That's a three-year contract, I believe, that we that we have with Farmhouse. But the breakfast and the lunch or dinner areas are reimbursable.
Okay, thank you.
And let me tell you, Deb, those meals for the kids, they come in handy for a lot of the families.
Very, very well thought out. And they have in each bag is a printed out list of what the meals, each meal consists of, so.
Very nice.
That's awesome. It's awesome.
Yep.
Any more questions for the reports? Otherwise, we do need action to accept and place the reports on file.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Larry, a second by Glenn to accept the reports. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. 7.1 vouchers.
I will move that we approve the vouchers. I do not have the exact number in front of me because I lost my connection, but it's 519,000 and something.
Let's get that number. And so 519,918 dollars and 76 cents.
So moved.
I'll second his motion. Could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Yes, Nicole Boy.
Yes.
Cindy Garrity.
Yes.
Debbie Knopf.
Yes.
Larry Derigan. Glenn Carlson.
Yes.
Esme Martinson.
Yes.
Magdalen Dale.
Yes. 8.1, this evening we have strategic planning update.
We have Mr. Kevin Strandberg with us tonight. Kevin will provide an update. We spoke a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. And of course, when when the pandemic hit, Kevin was idle for a month and a half. So Kevin, you want to give an update?
You bet. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Great. So I think we can safely call this the never ending planning process. We have delayed this process, I think, three times already. And needless to say, we're going to have to delay it again. The plan right now was that, right now, as we're speaking, we had talked about facilitating listing sessions in Bayfield, Madeline Island and Red Cliff. Of course, those are not going to happen at this point in time. I would propose to the board that we delay those until September and October with the idea that we could still complete the strategic plan by the end of December and put it in place for a strategic plan that would be 2021 through 2025. So my proposal is to delay the listing sessions until fall, get into the school year, look at times in September and October, and still try to complete this process by the end of December. That is open to whatever the board would like to do, but it doesn't seem feasible that we can listing sessions in person at this point in time. And I feel like doing that with a Zoom sort of approach is really going to limit the truth, information that we get from your community.
I think that's a a good alternative.
Yeah, I'm okay with the timeline. I mean, we're working off of those other goals set earlier this year, so I feel like we at least have some direction.
And we'll have some more feedback on those goals as well.
This is Glenn. I think that makes sense, Kevin. Thank you.
Hey, Kevin, this is Jeff. Can you provide administration and also the board with a new timeline schedule like you've done in the past?
Yes, revision number 94. I'll get to you by the end of the week.
94, okay.
Yeah, I can do that. It's about the logical step and still be able to put it before January. Let's go back to having open meetings by September and October.
Let's hope. Let's hope. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you so much, Kevin.
You bet. Anything else that you need from me at this point in time?
I I don't.
No.
We'll be in touch.
All right, great. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Kevin.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Moving on, 9.1, the preliminary 2020, 2021 budget approval. Randy?
Um, Chris, can you make if I can? Chris, can you make, if I can share my screen?
I think you have to share that.
Yeah, on the bottom, there's a little green arrow. Share.
Chris, can you hear me?
I, yes, I can hear you. But I believe that you have to instigate the share.
Use mine?
It's at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, share screen, screen button at the bottom of your screen.
Hey, Chris, did you hear?
I did. Oh, wait a minute. Let's see. Okay, try it now, Randy. There we go.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so starting with the revenue side. This is initial budget. So the preliminary budget will be totally different from our set budget when we come back in October. I don't have a lot of information as to what is coming through the state. So really, I just kind of have to, you know, guess and try to figure it out. I was able to do our property taxes, but again, we don't have our property value that usually comes in October. So right now, I'm guestimating our property tax revenue and fund 10 to be 6.249 million. And then debt service, we have one more debt service payment to go next year, and that's at 345,000. And then 70,000 for the community service fund out of our property taxes. Total local sources, 6.334. The 84% of local revenue includes admissions to games, interest from our CDs and investments, and then charitable gifts that we are given to and miscellaneous other revenues. Then we have inter-district revenues. This includes, you know, our, some of our grants that we have, our athletic co-ops. And then we also have transfers in for open enrollment. And I believe next year, it'll be about eight open enrollment students, approximately seven or eight open enrollment in. The state revenue sources. We have special education state aid at 420,000. We are anticipating that to be at 30% next year of what we spend this year for special ed expenditures that are eatable. Also, transportation aid and Fund 10 is 56,000. Special ed, we do have one route specialized, so we get about 3,300 in state aid for that. Library aid will go up a little bit. This year, it was around 18,000. Equalization aid, 152,000. I'm not seeing that will go up too much for next year. High poverty, high poverty aid. I'm guestimating at 29,000, but this year, due to a lot of businesses being shuttered for a while, that could potentially go down because there's only a certain pool of money for high poverty aid. So if more districts apply for it, then our part of the money goes down. We also have some other grants, special project grants. AGR is for students in the lower grades to keep those classroom sizes reduced or having tutors, things like that. We get state aid on of $211,000. Revenue through local government, this is forestry land. That's about 41,000. Computer aid and personal property aid, 11,000. That doesn't change really a lot from year to year. Spurcity aid, it's another one of those pots of money, and it's going to depend on how many districts qualify for that money to see how much we have coming to us. But I'm estimating at 175,000. Per pupil categorical aid, 365,000. Obviously, that's the most we get from the state for pupil aid. I don't believe there will be much of an increase next year. High cost transportation aid that is based on a percentage of what we pay out for our transportation because we're such a big district and our transportation costs are high. We get, you know, 1.93,000. Also, special education state aid, I think, oh, I think I already talked about that. 420,000. Our federal sources, we have impact aid. I increased this to 1.992 this year. My reasoning is I see it increase from year to year. Also, the Congress has been good about appropriating increased funding in state, in impact aid when the president is asking to cut that funding. So as long as that continues, I think we'll see an increase in impact aid funding. Also, title. Different title grants. We believe we're going to get more money in Title I next year to do to the COVID pandemic. They are talking about additional funding there. Medicaid. That's always, we're not sure what we're going to get, but I'm estimating at 56,000 in special ed. Also, total federal income dollars, 2.336 in Fund 10, 171 in Fund 27, and approximately 309 and food service. Then we have our, our transfer to special ed funds and to food service. That transfer is, comes directly out of Fund 10. So those are state dollars, I mean, district dollars that we have to put into Fund 27 and Fund 50 to make them whole and so that they're not in the red at the end of the year. Any questions on revenues? Okay, then I'm going to move on to expenses. Obviously, our salary and fringe is the highest cost to our, to our budget. Total contracted salaries, I estimated it at 2%. That's what the board to go, not negotiated, but that's what they just settled on. The CPI was 1.71, I believe. And just to give the employees a little extra, I budgeted at 2% directed by the board. Substitute wages, I'm assuming they're going to be down next year, hoping they're going to be down in all funds, hopefully. So total salaries across the board is 4.14 in Fund 10, 1.25 special ed. And then we have Title VII and Food Service coming in lower. On this budget for health insurance, I budgeted 10%. Unfortunately, I found out late Friday, well, early Friday morning, that we're looking at a 15% increase, which was very startling. But we will go over that, I'm hoping, on next month's agenda, just to look at that closer. Retirement, I don't expect to go up at all. It just goes up the additional contract dollars that we put in disability. Dental insurance, I did include a 5% increase for that. Any questions on salary and fringe besides the gasps over health insurance? Okay. Personal services. I did include the purchase services detail as part of your, in your packet. And it included activity from 2018, 19, all the way to 1920, and then the amount for 2021. Now, we have put a lot of these on hold. A lot of personal services are like, anything that we do to our building, anything that anybody that's not our employee comes in and does in our building is considered purchase services. So if you remember, in February, we withheld a lot of our building improvements until the pandemic started and not sure where we're going with that now. But so, so far this school year, we've really, we only spent 292,000 out of the 552, but, $552,000 that was budgeted. Last year, we did that big roofing project. So that was the 1.129 million that we spent the year before on that. So I put that detail out there. Maybe if you have any questions, you can, you know, just let me know or.
Could we talk about it maybe?
It was about to kind of late, so I don't know if everybody got a chance to see it. All right, then. Going on. In Fund 10, we have all of our our regular monthly heating and cooling and water and sewer. I don't see a lot of increase in that. Pupil transportation, I included a 5% increase for pupil transportation. Just because this is a negotiation year. And typically, that's what we saw was a 2% non-negotiation years, 5% negotiation years. So I kind of just continued that. When do we usually do negotiations for, for transportation, Jeff? Is it, when do we usually do negotiations for transportation? I think it's usually in
Early mid-May.
Mid-May, okay. So we'll know more on that. Otherwise, there wasn't a lot of change in, like, employee travel. We have our budget set and we weren't increasing any professional development or anything like that. So that's pretty much the same. Another big expense is open enrollment. I believe we're down in the 40s somewhere for next year. We have one more year before a large group of juniors this year will be coming off. So I'm hoping that that looks better.
We're going to decrease.
It should decrease after this next year. Payments to CISA, there was a change there. If we bring OT, I'm sorry, PT services in-house, our CISA contracts will go down to around 65,000. Also, payments to the Wisconsin Technical College System. That's for students doing any kind of learning outside of here. And that's around 15,000, guestimating that. Next, we go to non-capital objects. So anything over, anything under 5,000, $5,000 typically goes into non-capital objects. General supplies, that's like any classroom materials, paper, medical supplies. Apparel, that is for the athletic department. We've been upgrading all of our uniforms. So I believe next year, we'll have a kind of a lull in that. Instructional media, that's anything in the classrooms for instructional materials, textbooks and things like that aren't included in that. It's more like library books, library media, things like that. Non-capital equipment. Every year, we do try to upgrade the furniture in the rooms. Kind of do like a rolling every couple of years. We pick a couple of rooms and just kind of upgrade them. That also includes furnishings, equipment, anything like that. That would also be like computers, I'm sorry, not computers, that's not technology, but around 145,000 is what I'm guessing on that. We're doing a math instruction, instructional upgrade next year. So I'm assuming textbooks, workbooks, 125,000. That is just my estimate. I'm hoping it's not that much. Non-capital supplies, hardware, software. This is like our software we use for infinite campus, software that we have for payroll. It's a wide range of things that we use every, every year. Next would be the capital objects. Site improvements. If we need to have snow removed or bring wood chips in, things like that is under site improvements. If we have to redo equipment on the playground. We are purchasing a driver's education vehicle next year to continue down the path of bringing driver's education back. Also, non-instructional software, about 30,000. So total capital objects is 135. Insurance, 120,000. That includes workers' comp, liability insurance, any business type of insurance. Long-term bond payment, our last one next year for $325,000 and then the interest of $20,000. Next, we have the transfers to special education and food service. It's a revenue in those funds, but it's an expense to Fund 10. So total transfers to those funds, 1.514 million. So that gives us a balanced budget across the board for all, all of our funds. Any questions?
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
And I, I would encourage Magdalene and Esme to get in touch with you to, you know, one-on-one if they've got any questions. School financing is extremely complicated. And you're excellent at explaining it.
Thank you. Yes, please give me a call if you guys have any questions. We can go over Wofer, which is our Wisconsin software dimensions that we have to use for accounting software. Anything, any questions, call me anytime.
Randy, I have a question. In that personal services budget you sent us, what is that acquisition and remodeling for $335,619?
So that's all of Dave Weber's money that goes into roughs or repairs or it's Money that goes into roughs or repairs or it's all under that same umbrella. Like I said, that's why we, we had like one million dollars last year because of the rough situation. And I know we do have money that we have in Fund Forty Six, about four hundred thousand dollars. So. We're estimating, you know, almost. Between the two funds, the four hundred thousand and the three hundred thousand over seven hundred thousand in building repairs for next year.
Can we have a schedule of what is projected to be included in that?
We. We brought some things forward this last February that are put on hold, so those things would have to eventually get done if. You know, depending on building assessments. There, I think we got it under. We were looking at replacing the boiler system. Dave, do you wanna? Talk about anything? Pointing the sandstone. Can you hear him?
Kind of.
Looking at shingling the old part of the sandstone building. Replacing fascia, the siding on the dormers and tuck pointing the sandstone, which is in desperate need of that. That's something that. John Grisino was looking at, but of course, it's on hold now. With the coronavirus going around, so it's kind of on hold right now. I am going to get back to him and see what he's got planned. He can come.
The loan was gonna be, we figured around five hundred.
I, I think so. I mean, I, you know, I'm no carpenter, I don't know.
That was approved already, the new roof.
Say, wasn't that, what was the proof for this year? I thought we already had some. We said to hold off on, yeah, some really big things, but there were some I thought that were getting done this year still, like the sand.
Yeah, that, that was the main part, the roof. Yeah, we held off on flooring.
Yeah.
Stuff like that, so.
Heating.
Yeah, the heating systems, the needs upgraded and several, several of the rooms have ventilators. Some of them were upgraded in two thousand and two with there's some that were, you know, still part of the addition in the sixties, I believe, so. There's about, there's seven of them, seven ventilators that needed to be replaced, but we're looking at something more central. Essential heating system for those areas instead of just those ventilators. But that's kind of on hold too, so.
Do you need action on this budget this evening, Randy?
I believe we, we wanted approved just to move forward.
Have we clarified if we're eliminating or keeping the playground FTEs?
It was in the notes from the last one of the board meetings that was just given to you that they were being approved.
And could you go over the other changes that are being? Approved, I mean, presented. We talked about them in the finance meeting, but not all of the board members were there, so.
Well, the, the FTEs that are, that were approved in the February board meeting are on here. So those included. Some administration reconfiguration. Changing the. School psych to point six, bringing in the PT person as an employee instead of a CISA contract. Also, increasing a point five special aid to a full-time assistant. And those were approved on, in the February board meeting.
This is Glenn. I will move, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary budget. As presented tonight with, of course, the understanding that this is very fluid.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second it. So we have a motion by Glenn and a second by myself to accept the preliminary budget presented this evening. Can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Nicole, can I say something that is also an executive? Is there a reason that it was put in executive also?
Put in executive to discuss the.
Was ten point three.
Um, I believe we have it in executive to discuss the administrative configuration.
Okay, okay.
So we could take action now or we could wait until we come out of executive. That's fine with me.
Well, we can approve what Randy's presented. It sounds like that's what Glenn's motion was.
Yes, and I think, again, this is fluid and. You know, it's gonna get tweaked hugely, so. Sorry, Esme and Magdalen. Welcome, welcome.
So the motion stands. Could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Yep, Knopf.
Yes.
Larry Derrigan. Larry Derrigan.
I said yes.
Cindy Garrity.
Yes.
Glenn Carlson.
Yes.
Nicole Boyd.
Yes.
Esme Martenson.
Yes.
Magdalen Dale.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on nine point two, consider twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, school year calendar first reading. Wave the second reading. Were there any questions?
Were those few things changed?
It was changing Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. And taking off holidays, adding a tentative snow makeup day. Did we do that? Oh, yeah, on April second and adding graduation was what I had in my notes.
Yep, that's what it was.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Did I hear several other eyes? Cause I didn't catch them. Okay. Well, motion carries. Nine point three winter transportation committee update. Jeff, Dave, Randy?
And you can hear me now.
Yeah.
Okay, we met with the winter transportation committee, Dave Weber, myself and Randy. We went to La Pointe and we. Why did you the? Agenda? And one of the, one of the areas that, that we talked about at finance recently and probably at the board level in the past was. Last spring and summer, there was conversation and in terms of the committee, just for Magdalen and Esme. There are three parts, there are three parts to the committee. We have La Pointe. We have La Pointe as one, we have the furry. Furry lines as two, and we have Bayfield School District as three, and this is primarily for the wind sled operation. And then, yep, when, when the ice road is in effect. And so there's also a cost to that. And so previously, we've been paying ten thousand dollars a year as a district. And that money goes into purposes of insurance and et cetera. And so this past summer, there was a concern because there was the idea that the possibility for this coming school year. There is going to be a five thousand dollar in, increase to fifteen thousand dollars. Well, at this particular meeting, we have a healthy fund balance. The ice road was not in effect this year. So minimal money was spent, and so there is a fund balance of roughly around thirty thousand dollars or so. So the committee chose not to go with the fifteen thousand dollar. Projected budget that the school district would have to fund. We lowered it down to five thousand. So in the budget that you have tonight that you approved, the five thousand dollars was in that particular budget. So that's a good thing. That, it was, that decrease was a lot better than the fifteen thousand. And of course, there's vouchers. We went through those vouch, vouchers. Are for labor, equipment that Arnie Nelson and his company provides for the wind sleds. And, and those should be in front of you within this document. You wanna say that? Randy has a comment on the payment.
Also, the final payment for the wind sled was on there. For the two new windsides.
Okay, and Randy or Jeff, how much of that are we reimbursed still by the state of Wisconsin?
Up to thirty five thousand dollar of year expenditures. What percentage of that, Randy? Is it thirty five thousand? Seventy five percent of expenditures up to thirty five thousand.
Okay, so did that cover for this year when we didn't use it? Do we still claim some of that money then for the other payments?
It covered a good chunk of, a better chunk of the payment that we anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
That fund balance included the fifteen thousand from each agency this year already. How does that even work? Because wasn't there a fund balance before we all pitched in the forty five thousand?
It did carry over. Do we have a fifteen thousand dollar payment last year? I'm asking Randy if we had the fifteen thousand last year. Was it, it was ten. Yeah, this coming cycle, Nicole was going to be the fifteen thousand dollar amount. That sense has been reduced to five. Right. That was an anticipated amount. Go ahead, Glenn.
If I can just add. I know this has come up and I am now on the town board and we, we are administering this fund. My understanding is it has got a lot of money in it.
Yeah.
And so I think that there's, I mean, the number I saw, I don't, don't quote me, but it was. Well over seventy five thousand dollars. That now we have in this maintenance fund. And so I think that the idea of. Decreasing everyone's contribution going forward to like, you know, five thousand a year is pretty reasonable.
Glenn, if I could just add to that, Randy and I are showing a fund balance of thirty thousand three hundred seventy five.
As for the district share overall.
Overall, as of for April fifteenth, twenty six.
Okay, well, I might be saying odd numbers, but it's still, even if it's thirty thousand.
Yeah.
You know, that's still. That's well over a year's worth of maintenance, and so I think, you know, we can definitely cut that back. Next year to the five thousand level that I think has been talked about at the committee level.
Can we get a solid number on the fund balance, I guess?
Yes, that's the one that I, Randy and I, Randy and I just came up with. We have the sheets. And it's in your, it's in your information. It's thirty thousand three seventy five eighty.
Can we confirm, Jeff, that that's not just the district's share, but that's the. That that's the full amount?
Yes, we'll definitely do that, Glenn, and we'll get that updated for the, for our May.
Sure. Thanks.
You bet.
You guys, I have a question here. Are we still paying on? Costs towards the old wind sleds? Or are we just utilizing the new wind sleds that we have? Cause I, I thought my understanding was that one wind sled was ready to be, you know.
Retired.
Retired.
Didn't go on bed or something?
Did. We, we. And I think the school should have gotten a check for like three hundred or four hundred dollars. For that one. Maybe it was more than that, but not much. But yeah, Cindy, you're, you're thinking about that, right?
But are we still paying for repairs for those older ones or are we just working off the newer ones?
Well, the older ones are still, and I should probably let Jeff talk about this, but the older ones are still in existence. Of course, they weren't used at all this year. And the new ones are now in, completely in service, as I understand it, and. Ready for, you know, maybe next season we'll have a ice road, but. Yeah, I think that the. I'm gonna defer to Jeff and Dave on this.
Okay, so here's what we have thus far. The older wind sleds are not repairable. So there should be minimal if none repairs there. They are going to, he did run them. Last year, just to run them out, basically. The new wind sleds, there was some early challenges to them. I know there are some early repairs to them. That's since been completed with the warranty. And so we really haven't used those new ones to a point where there's a lot of conversation yet because we didn't have ice this year. And last year, they were being repaired due, due to some changes that needed to be done. And I think last year they ran the old ones for a while until they could get the new ones in operation. Dave is here. Dave, anything else to that? So really ideally next winter will be really the first winter for full operation.
For the new ones.
For the new ones.
The LA one and two.
So we, so that, which one does we not own? Which one is not owned by this group, the Husky or the Ice Angel?
So Dave is saying that he believes we own all four of them.
And I. My understanding is, Jeff, that we, that the school district has been part of this for. You know, since we bought the old ones.
Yeah, I wanna say, give me a year or two flexibility here, but right around two thousand and ten is when this winter transportation committee was formed.
Yep.
Give or take a year, but right around that timeframe.
So of any, I mean, of all the functional wind sleds, there was the one that was now put up for bid and sold. For a thousand or two thousand dollars. But all of the remaining wind sleds, and I think there are the two new ones, and I think we still have the two old, at least two old ones. That we also own.
You still own sixty seven thousand dollars on the new wind sleds too.
Right, what we owe, but I, I'm saying, I think we own a part of both the new wind sleds and the. Kind of the old two wind sleds.
We do, and that's. We do, and that's what Arnie's, the old ones, old wind sleds is what Arnie has been using. Um, until we could complete the new ones, because the new ones weren't readily available when they got them, they had to send them back, they have some, right, some issues with them.
Yep.
So you're correct, we, we, we would own all four of them.
Yep.
So we're just having conversation on reducing the startup costs, we're not taking action on anything. I particularly don't wanna take action if we don't know if that's our fa- portion of the fund balance. Or if that's collective, regardless, I mean, it's still.
Exactly. Yeah, and so I, I, I think that the committee's recommendation, as I'm reading it, is to, um. Assess each of the entities, the three entities. Instead of the ten or fifteen thousand we've done in the last few years to drop that down to five thousand. If it, am I?
Yep.
What's on that, Jeff?
Yes, that's correct for the, for the budget purposes. Yes. And then, um, we will check the fund balance to find out, is that a collective or if that is the remaining fund balance and, and. And we should have that information for us soon.
So we're not taking action?
Um, we would, we would like you to take action on the, on the five thousand dollar budget for, um, for Randy, so she can nail that one in her, in her budget. Uh, that, that, that action was taken at the La Pointe, uh, I'm sorry, the, the committee, we, that, that was, um. Um, action taken there, but Dave and I and Randy made sure to tell the committee that, of course, it's always board approval here beyond that committee.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, um, and I don't know that this is really what we need a motion for, but. That we, uh. Indicate to Randy that we're willing to do the five thousand next year for the winter transportation committee maintenance. And, yes, I'm also very interested in what our actual balance is. But five thousand seems a lot better than ten or fifteen thousand, so. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Glenn, a second by Cindy, uh, we need a roll call, please, Linda.
Cindy Garrity.
Yes.
Larry Derrigan.
Yes.
Deb Knopf.
Yes.
Glenn Carlson.
Yes.
Nicole Boyd.
Yes.
Magdalen Dale.
Yes.
Esme Martenson.
I'd like to ask one more thing of Randy, I, I think Randy, you've done this before for us, or it's, but it's been a few years. And that is to make a show the, make something that we can see as a board. What our expenses are and what this, what we've received reimbursement for and what the district has actually paid. Out for that in a, if we've had to pay in addition to what the state funding is, that twenty five percent or whatever that's left, could you? Could you do something like that, or do you have some of those numbers?
I did an amortization schedule, is that what you mean?
Is that where it includes the money that we're getting reimbursed from the state?
Let me share this with you, hold on.
And, and Deb, if I can just, um, for Esme.
Thousand from state aid, our yearly budget costs have to be forty six thousand, six hundred and sixty seven dollars.
Is that just for the, is that just for wind sleds now?
We haven't had a lot of expenses in the last couple of years, especially this year. Um, we were able to pay thirty one thousand on the loan. That we thought it would take up to five years, but right now we only owe sixty seven thousand on the loan. But this year we spent forty six thousand, six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, so we will receive the full state aid.
And if I can just explain to, to Magdalen and Esme, um, many years ago, our dear state senator at the time. Bob Chowke, um, introduced into the state law. A thirty five thousand dollar annual allocation to any school district that had to transport their students over ice. And there's only one school district that qualifies for that. And so we get, um, you know, a very, is it seventy five percent, Randy?
Correct.
So we get seventy five percent of the cost of our, um, winter, of, of basically the ice road transportation. The wind sled and the van, um, seventy percent of whatever we spend on that. And that includes the purchase of these two new wind sleds that the school district participated. One third, one third, one third with the ferry line and the town of La Pointe. Um, because of the transportation of students. But, uh, we get, the school district gets, um, seventy percent of that back. Up to a maximum reimbursement annually of thirty five thousand, and that's actually not in the state budget, that's actually in state law. And so it's never, um, you know, it doesn't depend on the state budget.
Yeah, so when we talk about some of these high expenses, the forty six thousand, it's important to always remember that. We're getting that thirty five thousand reimbursed, so. Thank you, Randy, for having that on hand.
Welcome.
Moving on, weekly staffing plan.
So, um. Back in March, when we went to the board, uh, to develop, originally it was through April sixth, the staffing plan. Um, to get us through those three weeks and to acknowledge to the board that, um, you know. When everyone was let go in terms of students going home and teachers getting prepared to, um. You know, put their classrooms together for online learning, uh, this is a second version of that. This year, um, allows, uh, the board members to see, um, all of our staff members. In terms of their hours that they're working per day, and it, it allows you to, uh. To go down to the third page and to really identify what, what the individuals are doing and how we're. All the supervisors and higher, we at the central office are monitoring our workers, uh, through this pandemic time. So if you go through there, uh, there's a continuity, uh, continuing learning, there's providing support, outreach families. Uh, trauma sensitive class, this is for the teachers. Uh, they're helping with other essential student needs, the teachers are helping with academic planning for families without internet. So there are just a lot of different things that our staff are doing, um, together to plan during this pandemic time. And then the next sheet down, you get into the teaching assistance, uh, it illustrates the number of hours they're working per day. And it also, um, provides you, um, responsibilities that they're doing throughout this pandemic time period.
I have to say that I also found, uh, Missy's report, which specifically for the K five students. Gave a really nice report on how they were connecting with like a hundred percent of our families. In this time was a better family connection than they've had before because of needing to get things to students and meals and, and technology. And, uh, and that, what, ninety percent of our students are responding to the. To the virtual teach, learning right now, so, um, I found that report really helpful in understanding what teachers were doing.
Yeah, as of last week, uh, well, it might be more than that now, but as of last week, we had three families that we identified. That were having difficulties, uh, with, uh, the online internet, um, service, and so we had three families out of the hole that we could identify, so. Great job by everybody. Any questions on this?
Thank you.
Moving on, ten point one adjourned to executive session in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. We have two, three, four items, district COVID nineteen response evaluation. Preliminary twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget approval, food service meal program update. School board and district administrator evaluation.
Uh, Nicole, uh, do we, Chris, do we need to bounce out of here and bounce back in, or we just stay here?
Yes, so the, the technology notes here, um, the closed session is gonna be a separate meeting, um, that Debbie set up. So you should have an invite from her, so anybody in the closed session will join that meeting. And this meeting, the public meeting, I'm going to keep this open so that when you're done with executive session, then you should come back to this meeting. I'll pause the recording, but, um, this meeting will continue on, so you can come back to this after closed session.
Are you going to mute this meeting then, at this point?
Um, this meeting will just stay open, you should all leave this meeting, um, all the board members should leave this meeting. Um, anybody else who wants to stick around, that's fine, um, it'll just be.
The invite is in your email, on your school email, yep.
Yes, for the closed session, the invite should be there for all the board members. So the board members will leave, uh, join the second, the closed session, and then come back to the session when closed session is complete.
No, we do need a motion for executive session.
I think you're there for the first three, aren't you, or no?
Debbie left too.
Or do you wanna, you want, you want Larry to make a motion or second?
We do.
Going to executive.
Don't leave Esme, cause we need you for a quorum, oh, Glenn's still on to, to, uh, make follow through this motion.
Motion to go into executive.
We have a motion by Cindy, a second by Larry, can we have a roll call, please, Linda? Did she leave too?
Nope, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Deb Knopf.
She's in the executives.
Oh, she went, okay, Larry Derrigan.
Yes.
Glenn Carlson. Esme Martenson. Sorry, okay, I got that, I got yes from Esme.
Did you get my yes?
Yes, I did.
I'm gonna go to the executive now.
Okay, Magdalen Dale. Magdalen Dale.
I believe she left.
Nicole Boyd.
Yes.
Cindy Garrity. That's four.
We have four?
Yes.
Motion carries.